To be the host for today's session, I'm Donald, one of the organizing committee of the first global tourism and hospitality conference. Welcome to this special section on online education and MOOCs. May I now introduce our four speakers today. First, Professor Emmett Rios Forhals. Followed by Professor Bruce Tracy. And Professor Eric Cherry. Last but not least, Professor Hanjin Cho. May I also invite Professor Kit Jenkins, the session chair in this section, to come onto the stage. May I now pass the time to Professor Jenkins. Professor Jenkins, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our special session on MOOCs. And I know it's going to be interesting because the subject has brought a lot of interest, focus, and concern over the last five years. Fortunately, we do have the speedings panel, and panel which have their own individual viewpoints. Fortunately, they each come from very different backgrounds to rise to the government and public positions in academia at the moment. One, I would say very briefly as an introduction was, fortunately, the last three weeks ago, we were in a trip. At Beijing News Conference, number three major platforms, Eric or several, Vex and one is called, it's Future. And what was interesting, listening to these presentations, was that at the moment, they all admitted, nobody had made any money. And when you look at the investment in these platforms, this has become an incredibly difficult area of interest. The second thing is, often the university's perspective, there was some very interesting inputs. For example, the highest chance to be university anywhere, and it sits in the world. So that group, the group of fifty MOOCs up and running online. And what was quite interesting, he said the two most popular was philosophy and history, which in the university, which is a good benefit school and a veteran school, was very surprising. University Queensland also very, Danhu had used that expression, on developing MOOCs as well. But despite all this optimism, there were some broken questions. And some of the questions related to sustainability, we MOOCs, massive home learning courses. And if they open, that means there's almost a philanthropic offering, which was, hey, you're not expecting a room back from them. So this is a challenge, I think, certainly to universities which are really state funded. But secondly, they focus us on this best of health or sustainability. And in the conference, this was skirted around, globally really addressed in any debt. So what I came away with was about a body of fashion, impression rather, and that was the technology is now improving so quickly. And technology is more valuable to achieving the potential of online and MOOC programs. What that potential is, and what the challenges are, I'll leave to our expert panel to talk to you about. So what they always ask me before we start, they want to make very short presentations, because they want to steal the, I'm sure they did this, the questions from the audience. Because wherever I've been in seminar or with the MOOCs, there are so many questions, and many of them are fairly repetitive, in the sense that they are exploring new theories, which are of interest, but also concerning to them. So without any further ado, I'm going to ask Professor Hanjin Cho to come along with our first speaker. She was charmed by the recipe charm to be the lead in the development of MOOCs in the tourism management. She can tell you what she found, and it's quite impressive. But also, I hope she will tell you something about behind the scenes of the development of MOOCs, because they are technically difficult in terms of getting a really final quality product. Took a little bit of her, Hanjin, and she's professor of tourism here. She received a BA from Nankai, Nankai University in China, MA from University of Waterloo in Canada, and was home student in South China for her PhD. Research interest in tourist study, consumer behavior, and China hotel and tourism development policy issues. She's been the editor in chief for Journal of Quality Assurance in Hospitality Tourism since 2016. She has served as guest editor of International Journal of Contemporary Hotel Management, and Journal of Vacation Marketing on special issues for China and hotel and tourism development. She was also recent editor of International Journal of Contemporary Hotel Management. She has published more than eighty UFF new journal articles and conference papers in all the major international journals. She's also got field experience by being a consultant for the representative world tourism, among the United Nations World Tourism Organization. She's worked in China for the CNTA, CTS Travel Group, and many other organizations and companies. So what we have then is a lady with a very good comprehensive academic background, boosted by experience in the field. But certainly like myself, coming from MOOCs new, almost eighteen months ago. So we're very interested to hear what she has to say. And can I just say last thing before we start? When I spoke to the speaker, I asked him that the two things. One, talk about the experiences online learning and with MOOCs. Secondly, how they saw the potential, and thirdly, what they saw as the challenges. So ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce our first speaker.
Well, first of all, thank you very much Professor Jenkins, who has been my mentor, my professor, my POC supervisor. And I'm so grateful to have here, hurt him here, to be with me on this journey for eighteen months. Well, I guess I have many, many stories to tell because of the time, with the ability to our valuable panel members. And I'll just quickly walk you through what we have got here. Many information has been distributed, I wouldn't go into the details. Well, the way I see MOOCs is just more than MOOCs. There's so much more we can do to encourage the commerce blended learning. The world is changing, the learning behavior of our learners is changing. So I guess our academics also facing the changing world. What I would like to share with you, this is a bit of information, the team has been putting together for the benefit of the audience. Some people probably heard more about MOOCs, some people probably heard less. So there are five different types of MOOCs going on in the world at the moment. We started with MOOCs for general interest, and then followed by individual subjects. Now currently, we have the Arizona State University Global Freshman Seminar Academy, who is offering the courses for credit. And then also followed by the series of courses, in which ASEC is one of the example by Cozera. And then they call concentration, whereas Alex call act serious. So we went through all this stage, and then finally, my team, my consultation with my dean, I really have to say, our dean has been most supportive to be, for us to be here. After about two years of studying from a piece of paper, no idea what to do. Every time I have difficulty, I went to K, I say, is this okay? He always say, just go ahead and try. So that is the spirit we have here, we are trying everything, and then we are hoping it works. At the moment, it is working, but still a lot of improvement. So finally, after many, many rounds of discussion and consultation with our dean and colleagues, we finally decided we go for Michael Master, the very, very first group in the world. It is a very adventure journey for us. Every night I'm thinking, are we doing this right? Are we moving in the right direction? Always ask me myself this question in consultation with many good colleagues here. Anyway, so we have embarked on this innovative journey, so this is what we have got so far. And then I was very encouraged a couple of weeks ago that George Tech, you know, George Tech University has just come up with this new line of thinking. That so they are converting the MOOCs into the full online degree offering, and then charge the price between the offline degree and online degree, something in between. That is what another example available in the market. So these are the information, I'll leave the PowerPoint behind, and then you can look at each of them, how they look like in detail. Well, just a bit of information, I guess for some audience probably heard about this recently. So this Michael Master concept was first promoted, created by MIT. They have launched the first Michael Masters in supply chain management. So when I looked at this online, I said, wow, this is a direction we can consider. So immediately, I did a lot of thinking and reading, and go through their programs many, many times, I found we can try this. So as a result of that, and then globally, they are above, at the beginning, about nineteen of Michael Masters going to the first batch. So PolyU is on that first batch of journey. So what Michael Masters by definition, I sit on working group, we discussed a lot, and then find that it's a combination of series of courses, with no less than twenty-five percent of particular master level courses. So this has been agreed among the global Michael Master working group. It is a standalone certificate to be transferable to a full master degree upon meeting the untrans requirements. So that is a very important thing to note. This is another degree, it is a certificate to be transferable to a credit bearing course. So anyone can take it without any admission requirement. So just a bit of information, so these are the four courses we picked upon discussion with colleagues. So there are two electives. We need to take into consideration about the general interest and popularity of the courses, and also the course curriculum structure, in which later on, the learners can transfer to our curriculum. So we picked two electives and two compulsory courses. The electives are luxury management, and hospitality, and tourism technology and innovation. And then the two compulsory is our marketing and HR. So we sort of arranged it in a way structured six weeks for each course. And then, because at the PolyU, we have a requirement, course structure of thirty-nine hours, so we need to fulfill that requirement. So therefore, six and eight hours per week, in total, we have thirty-nine to forty-two hours for each particular course. And then we plan to run it two times. The first course, luxury management, has been completed by the end of March, now we will plan the rerun in July. So we plan to run each course two times a year, meaning we are running eight courses. And then, I just put this together during the last time, and so probably I'll share with the audience, this is what we've been doing. Is each course has been hosted by our PolyU academic staff, with the support from our academic scholars and professors around world, to give guest lectures. So the way we structured every course will work this way. We are quite fortunate to be able to bring the best people in their field, in terms of luxury service management. in terms of luxury service management, and I T, H R, and marketing to help us fill the mark here. And then, we, next stage, we probably look at academic research based on the big data. I think it has been going on in other countries and other, you know, world already. I'm sure Bruce and Professor Trey will share with you later. Some universities probably has already started building a center based on the online learning data, and to look at the students' learning behaviors, even the learning patterns. So there are many, many research opportunities I can see from this project. And then another way, I think, I was trying, this is a graduate level course. I'm doing a lot of thinking to see how can really fully utilize what our colleagues have been researching for all these years, and also how we can transform those knowledge to the industry. I remember in the first panel we had, there were a lot of issues discussing about how we bridge industry, the gap between industry and academics. I believe this online courses has a way to probably facilitate the academic and industry. For example, for the course, we have used some of concepts through our own research, and then get industry people involved to write the case studies. So I'll share with you later on, so for example, this course has been very well supported by our industry leaders, like Hotel Icon, of course, and then the Dragon Hotel in China, and then the Shangri-La Group, and the Polishula Group, and also Cassie Pacific, the Quarian Tree. So all these companies have give the permission for us to use some of their materials. For example, the company Public TV Videos, and then also some of their little, you know, real examples. And then what I thought probably, we can do some research about it, help them to write the case studies, and then to be incorporated in the course as part of the assessments and also learning material. So this, I think, is something quite unique, we have been trying and doing it. Another way is that academics do a lot of research, we, of course, it's very important to us to stay at the, you know, very upfront of knowledge creation. When we start knowledge created, then we can really tell our industry how we can use them. So what we did, that we have a team of researchers working for the team, for the project, personal team, one, two people only. And then to help us to encourage professors to say, "Would you like to use your research article for this course?" And then he or she said, "Yeah, great, brilliant idea." So that will help them to sort of like pre-read the article, let it be, make a very simple one-page or two-page summary, and highlight their major research findings. And then to be used in a course, and then also incorporate industry case studies. So I think that's another way we can facilitating the research world and also the industry practitioner world, really try our best to bring, bridge the gap. So these are the few ideas which we have been using it and doing it, and also hope to do more. And here is a big, just sort of, you know, I don't want to go into the detail. All the companies have participated and also showed their strong support. I was very, very encouraged when my colleagues and I we sit together to write the industry before we start a course. I said, "Would you be interested in these online courses we are creating?" They would say, "Oh, good idea, Professor will support you." That's it. So when I finished the first course on luxury management, which has been hosted by myself and together with a few leading professors in this field, I said, "Wow, and look at these old videos, watched by hundreds of people." And I said, "Well, probably we can write a report for them and tell them how much publicity we have generated for you." And then I did that with my team, and then we went to hotels, we, I want to make a personal visit to each of these companies who have supported forward. And then Shangri-La suddenly say, "Wow, brilliant, probably let's talk." So I said, "We're now seeking next year's permission, would you be interested in continue to working us?" So by all means, let's look into other ways, see if we can, you know, use part of our training material or our course material to be part of your training. I was so encouraged by all these discussions, so I think we'll continue to explore that and continue to let our industry know, you can use us more, and then we'd like to be closer to you. So these are the examples that we have studied. First one, we first started, we like to get our industry really involved in the course, content development, and also how they can use our research room. And then, again, our Professor Jenkins has mentioned earlier, so there are a lot of challenging issues ahead of us. We are public funded university, the university has invested heavily on this course, and then what's next? So the sustainability issue was in our mind from every beginning of the course. So therefore, I guess, as I mentioned earlier, we need to outreach to our industry supporters and our partners to tell them, "You're free to use our course, hopefully this is useful for you." And then also, this will be, hopefully can become a bridge courses for the existing bachelors or even, you know, other people who are interested, who are doing, working in the industry, they can use part of our course, and then accumulate the credit. And then later on, because our credit are valid for eight years. You may also, you may collect, you know, claim the credit whenever you are ready to come to the university. So these are ideas we have in mind, and then another thing I think is part of my dream, I hope eventually these online courses could be reach our senior citizen, I'm working on that. I have contacted some institute of aging societies in Hong Kong, and they have agreed for me to go to do a presentation. I feel our society is aging. A lot of people out there probably can use our courses to, just for interest maybe, and then probably have a better career, like people that mandatory retirement age is sixty. So all these ideas, I think I'm hoping to explore more using the, uh, this online material. And another thing I want to really pursue further is for all those less fortunate groups, so they were not able to come to campus due to the distance, due to the affordability. There's so many villages in China, there's so many kids are out of school. I believe all these online courses can be used wider. We're hoping to reach every corner of the world, I hope. So that is my dream, I hope more people will use our course. And then eventually, actually, I just put this lunch together during the lunch. For giving my guests, I skipped the lunch for half the time, I went back to my office, I said, "Got a few ideas." I was so encouraged and by Professor Trey, who really helped us from this whole course, is that it's a blended degree. So we can probably pick one micro master from Mac M A T, one micro master from New University of Queensland, one micro master from everywhere. We may can feel that, we stack them, put them together, that's a possibility. Anyway, so these are just some of my ideas. So, okay, here are the three companies who have showed interest, can use our material, so we can further explore this. Of course, Dragon Hotel, who are mainly running by our room lines in China, and Shangri-La Academy, who have contacted me, and also, also the Ballantra Company also contacted me. So we'll be further discuss all these possibilities and promote the online learning, and also how we can reach industry gap. And Hotel Icon, of course, so did any colleagues from Hotel Icon are interested taking our course? Just a module or just a one course, or two, very flexible? I spoke to a few colleagues from Hotel Icon, they're all interested. So we're looking ways to, you know, promote this concept of open learning, free learning, and accessible learning, affordable learning. So anyway, so this is another, I think, we're very proud. So we're not just talking about bridging the industry and academics. The way we set up, each of the course will be one live sessions with academic, and then one live sessions with industry practitioners. So we got Professor Jenkins, as the very first guest speaker for my course. So Professor Jenkins has given the learners around the world a very good review on what has been going on in the tourism industry for the past few decades. So we started the live session like that, and then I was very fortunate to get the, uh, Mr., Richard Hall, who's the G M of Hotel Icon, to speak about his experience on co-branding. So I think both live sessions went very well. So these are some examples, I don't think I have, I need to go through into the details. They are all available on our course studio page, so if you register, you will see all of them. All you have to do just register, it's all free. So this is the interview we did with the G M of Dragon Hotel, by looking at the luxury hotel. So I think that one was very, very well received. And then, this is the case we wrote for the Polishula Group, who has shown support and give us the permission to use the material. And then, I guess, these are the platform features, you're welcome to different ways of assessment. And I guess I'll stop here. Yes, thank you, thank you very much.
Well, that's a representative of the aging society, I think we're gonna move on quickly.
Oh, he's also signing up for our study commission.
Anyway, that was a very stimulating and certainly energetic talk, and a lot of things I'm sure that will excite the audience's interest. Now, this is my second big pleasure to introduce you, Professor Eric, Professor Eric. Now Eric is regarded, I think, as the guru, using English word, of MOOCs in, uh, in polytechnic university. Eric comes from a completely different background from Han Ching, in the sense that his first ten years in industry involved in design, development, deployment, support in governments, or an extension on the world renowned Colossus Expert System for handling bodily injury and various compensation claims. Since two thousand and two thousand and five, he assumed the roles of Chief Research Officer Asia-Pacific for C S E, Innovation Manager at the Australian Mutual Providence and Leva. He's published in the Expert Systems with applications, knowledge-based systems, information process and management journals. His papers have twice won the highly recommended category of the Emerald Literate Award. In his academic capacities, he has designed and delivered knowledge management, artificial intelligence, business process management portal and M I S courses at Sydney, University of Sydney, University of Technology, Sydney, University of New South Wales, I M T, University of Kentucky, Stonewash, Hong Kong Polytechnic University, world journey. And in fact, um, he has received the High Impact Award in two thousand and eight, was a winner of the Teaching and Learning Innovation Award in two thousand and two thousand and ten, respected in University of Hong Kong. So Eric comes then, if you like, from a very strong industry background before coming into academia, and clearly, he will have his own views on, again, his experience with online learning, and importantly, where he sees the potential and what he sees the challenges. Because there's no doubt, I think, you know now, that whatever our views may be, you know, online learning is a change agent in education, and particularly in higher education.
Thank you, Professor Jenkins. If you allow me, maybe I'll just sit down, we'll be a little bit more informed to share. And in fact, after Professor Han Ching's talk, very much left to me to add, really. But yours, you know, Professor Han Ching's talk is more about, you know, the exact courses or the topic of courses in the hospitality and hotel industry, and how they can be, I suppose, blended with company learning and development programs about other things. Now my interest, and I suppose, learning, that be more at the generic level. You know, facing an audience like this, my, you know, my vast experience as a guy, that there's a mixed audience out there. You know, there are people who are, you know, I suppose, interested in the H S C R micro masters, interested in, you know, developing books, interested in taking books, sampling some books, perhaps on the way to start developing some courses, and not sure exactly which, uh, which direction or path to take. And there are also people, I'm no doubt, like Professor Han Ching, who's already got courses on operation, or in, in operation, in full, in full swing. And then considerations may be about how they actually sustain and grow these courses, especially with, you know, minimum effort, maximum impact, and, you know, affordable policy, put it this way. So allow me to use perhaps a few minutes to address, to me, I, I see that, you know, three different phases of MOOC development for everyone who is interested and has the, uh, the capacity to develop a MOOC. You know, at the beginning, obviously, you know, our consideration is finding a topic, putting together a team, finding the resources, the skills, uh, to, to develop the MOOC. And that's, at that particular stage, there's already a lot of challenges. I should also say there's a lot of opportunities as well. Of course, some of the challenges are pretty obvious. It's about your capability, your institution's capability, your, you know, each area, the ability that you can actually develop a course, which without reason or doubt, you can sign up or attract quite a number of people to sign up. And whether the course that you're trying to, to put up, to put up and deliver is something of a, I suppose, a unique nature, rather than a complete duplication of another expression, I believe, which would be very difficult to, to compete. Then it's also your capacity to deliver. So at that part, you know, my only reflection is, you know, I, I finally figure out the reason why everyone use, you know, to call me an expert, pioneer, and guru. I finally figure out why, you know why? Because I've been here for twelve, thirteen years, and because I was luckily or unluckily developing cyber U programs. So, um, so I've been around for, for this long period, and much of my past days at PolyU have been spent on developing cyber U programs, which, you know, to the best my memory, the eight percent of the, of the interactions are online. Where we only have about two workshops, because that's there were students, so that's probably why. However, that did not, I can say proudly, that did not serve as any significant of material advantage when it comes to develop MOOCs. Because very soon you realize, developing an e-learning program, an in-house e-learning program, inside institution, e-learning subject, it's very different from delivering or developing a MOOC, right? What are some of the differences? First one, anyone first, I like to have an interactive audience. What's the first difference? The scale, the scale, you know? I'd be lucky to get a hundred students in my class. But, you know, when you hit, hit the book, journey, you're talking about at least in terms of signup, thousands, tens of thousands. And second difference is, basically, in the MOOC world, you have no control, especially when you're designing. You have no control on, on admitting or stopping your learners to sign up, unlike typical university entrance structure, where we have a hierarchy. We have a minimum entry requirement, we have screening, we have interviews, and we have all the formal things that if we want to select the right student or filter out the student we don't want. So in MOOC world, you cannot, and all these things complicate our design. Because you're dealing with mixed audience, some of just pro-secondary qualifications, some of, you know, university qualifications, some of, for my first MOOC, for example, initially, first writing, we have twenty-six thousand people sign up, and I look at the statistics provided by Ex-Institute, oh, you know, it's a surprise, seven hundred and eighty-seven admitted that they've got a doctoral degree. So, you know, you've got, you've got masters, and gurus out there. And that translates to other effects as well, which I can talk about later. So, you know, this is another thing which, which tells us that past experience on e-learning, if we don't learn some of the things that we have done in the e-learning world, in fact, we will work towards our disadvantage. So start from scratch, it may not be as a disadvantage, as long as you know the, uh, the different things, or the different parameters that are operating in a MOOC world and in e-learning world. Now, allow me to go into the second phase. The second phase in, in the MOOC evolution is, you know, for our journey at least, is launching. Launching a subject, and in fact, before that, is, is what? Marketing our subject, marketing our subject. Allow me to say a secret, how we go into life. We're, I'm for the fact that engineers, engineering, engineers traditionally are not good in marketing, right? So, but marketing is a very important part. You know, I have been trying to tell my colleagues, we put all our efforts into trying to produce the perfect course, the quality course. Of course, you know, we try to pursue higher and higher standard. But in the first run, the first one, first delivery of the MOOC, what attracts people to the course? The title, the subject, maybe your video, the marketing video, right? And the topic, and so forth. So it's not the content, right? Because they haven't even seen the content, right? So as well as, or more than just designing good content, the first way is very important. The first way is to do a marketing, a good marketing video, like a movie trailer, that people addicted to it. So that luckily has gone well for all the PolyU, for PolyU. So that luckily has gone well for all the Poly U, for Poly U MOOCs. And then while your MOOC is running, again, you know, there could be, you know, the queries because typical, you know, typical MOOCs can attract thousands, tens of thousands, and we don't know how many of these people are actually, you know, panning out to be active learners. Because if they're active learners, they will be regularly, actively, frequently posting replies in the bulletin boards in forums. So, you know, then you don't need research data to support you. A lecturer, a professor who deserted students in the bulletin board will end up, you know, the bulletin boards degenerating into just idle, you know, useless space. So if you really want your students to get excited and share your passion with them, you need to spend time on it. Obviously, we don't have limits of time. So, you know, a derivative of that problem is how many people you need to put on in order to monitor it closely. Monitor, you know, you may not need to respond directly, yes? And, you know, if there is any weak signal to detect, how fast you can possibly the weak signal to the instructors and be able to make some appropriate adjustments, I suppose. Allow me to go back to a point that I made earlier. You know, I said, in our first delivery, we had something like seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven PhDs. Now, that translates to a phenomenon I wasn't used to. In the usual classroom teaching environment, you know, we all, you know, are charged up to respond and answer any student's inquiries immediately, right? Trying to go back to the student and trying to figure out what was their point, what was the period, try to answer it immediately to the class, right? But in the MOOC world, I soon learned that, in fact, I better hold, hold, just be a little bit more patient, maybe hold for half a day or something like that. Because repetitively, I find that the response that is being offered in the bulletin board, you know, sometimes, you know, better responses than I can put in, right? So clearly, the seven-hundred-and-fifteen, among the seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven PhDs there, they are real good, so, right? And I learned from there. So the message is, I learned from them as well. And one other point I'd like to share with everybody is, most people, most people still treat the use of a MOOC as a delivery mechanism, a mechanism to reach out to, you know, all corners of the world, to reach out to thousands and tens of thousands of people and listen to whatever you like to share with them. That is true, that is right. But try to think about using that mechanism, that vehicle, as a collection mechanism, the other direction, collection mechanism. What does that mean? Well, I'll give you an example. If I moved in this third delivery, I soon found out that, hey, reaching out to one-hundred-and-eighty-nine countries, that's great, that's a statistic, but how, but if I can collect things from one-hundred-and-eighty-nine countries? So I set an assignment that, you know, any student who can report any local case studies on knowledge management or e-learning and so forth from your own city, please, you know, go to this Google document, and we have set up the tabs for you with all the drop-down fields, select them, enter each one of those, and then at the end of delivery, we review all the submissions, we determine which one is, you know, interesting enough to beef up, to become a decent case study. We've got the permission for those who permit us to go back to them and seek more information, and we work towards to develop a case study and promise them that we will embed this case study in the next delivery of our MOOC, right? So I thought that was a good mechanism to make use in order to just, you know, just run it in a passive mode. So we should always try to look for these innovative opportunities to learn from others, not just we try to deliver what we want to say, right? And then the third era, which most of us are already in as well, is how to sustain a MOOC, right? And that's no easy question. Now, with the Micromasters, of course, you know, common sense, there are for those who have, who have signed up and paid for, you know, a prize to join the courses, then most likely, this will be your, you know, wave of active learners. Still, you still need to look after them. But what about for people who has not paid but still seem to show an interest? How do we actually lobby them to, or how do we actually encourage them to stay on and on and on? Now, I don't know if that makes a point, but I do several things. One is, I deliberately organize some live sessions, live sessions like this, like us in YouTube, a small challenge because you have to find the right time to broadcast. Now, the statistics tell you a bit because it tells you, you know, the biggest group of your signup, for example, like ours is from America, the second largest group is from India, and the third largest group is, we compare sometimes Hong Kong, sometimes Germany or UK or something like that. So you need to pick a time, you know, pick a time. If you are completely unselfish, you may end up 2:00 AM of all time. So that's a first challenge, but that's a good thing to do, have a live session, because I find that for a live session, we typically attract seven-hundred to twelve-hundred live and then followed by thousands watching it replies, watching replays. But that's a good thing because I find out that some students are excited about seeing the professors live in action and be able to ask questions and get answers. I have a trick as well. I have an assistant, typically is a knowledgeable graduate, monitoring the bulletin board live, and I've told her only positive questions that she thinks that I can answer. So for the rest, I'm sorry, because of time, we'll deal with that offline later on. So the other thing that I've done, when you see me doing all these stupid things around campus, I've recorded a dozen very short clips, short clips to, you know, to eject some excitement into the active learner. Something like, you know, according to any statistics, you are being selected as one of the active learners last week. Well done, good on you, and I'm proud of you, I'm sure that you can continue this opportunity. So I've done a dozen of these clips with different backgrounds, different dresses, different places around campus, and we send it out sporadically every second week to those people that we have access, we have access to the full list, that has been qualified by Hacks as active learners. And that initial science that that has been doing good work, that's good effect because the active number of average learner has not dropped since then, right? It's been holding. So, I mean, not very high, a few percent, maybe seven or eight percent, not very high, but still better than degenerating into a further decline, all right? So I think I'm saying enough, and I'm more interested in listening to questions and what the other speakers have to share. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Eric. It's covered a large amount of the topic in a short period of time. Our third and next speaker is Professor Bruce Tracy from Cornell, a former school and hospitality terrorism. Bruce actually joined the faculty back in nineteen ninety-two after the sale of Christie and State University in New York in the early days. In addition to Cornell, he has also taught variety of new programs, executive school, the nervous business in Helsinki, Cornell, the Daniel Institute in Singapore, the International Hotel Institute in Paris, and in Mazar. He's also considered the newest executive education courses throughout North America, Europe, Middle East, Africa, and the region. His main area of specialism is focusing on human resources, strategies, and management. His research examines a wide range of strategic and operational level of digital products, including the impact of training initiatives on individuals and for performance, employee turnover, and from the law and leadership. A frequent contributor to the Cornell Hospital portfolio, has been widely published in mainland to mainland human resources and management journals, including Personal Psychology, Journal of Psychology, Organization Research Reports, and Journal of International Human Rights Research, including the Industry Relevance Award from the Cornell Center of Hospitality Research, and the Best Managing Developmental Field Award from the Academy of... Obviously, Bruce is a specialist in this area, has professional management in school, so we look forward to hearing, we look forward to hearing what he can help us to shed light on this new phenomenon of MOOCs.
Thank you, Kit. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm no IT guy, I'm just, as mentioned, an HR guy, and I had an interest in this many, you know, a few years ago, I'll give you a little story. But first, raise your hands, how many of you have taken a MOOC? Okay, a few of you have not, okay? How many of you have an interest in perhaps developing a MOOC? Yeah, you put your hands down right now because you're crazy. It's probably not something that I can really advocate strongly unless you have some pretty specific objectives in mind, and I'll share with you those as it goes through my comments. I'll speak to a couple of issues. One is just briefly my experiences in developing and implementing, and then what I think are some really cool opportunities for additional teaching and research. And then I'll leave the provocative stuff for Demetrius. So, 2014, I was trying to plan my sabbatic, and I had a plan to go teach abroad, that fell through, and so the university was through its second round of funding for MOOCs, and I said, cool, I'll go listen to some folks who've done this before. And there was a guy who was talking about a course he developed on the history of American capitalism, and the first comment that he made was, I'd never do this again. So that was almost a call for me to walk out of that room immediately. But as I started thinking a little bit more about his comments, a couple of things struck me. One is, he was doing it for all the wrong reasons. He was trying to attract students to his program, and I think the initial efforts in the MOOC space were misaligned in that regard. And what I learned in this is that it was designed for very, very personal reasons. The reason I got involved in is to help myself be a better educator and figure out how I can maybe extend the educational mission of reach and get out the word a little bit more broadly. And to that end, the primary purpose of this effort was to promote the industry. As has been mentioned, the hospitality industry in many places around the globe is not go-to. It's sort of an afterthought or something that if you're not going to go and be a doctor, lawyer, engineer, this is maybe a safe place to be. So we wanted to create some awareness that it's not just about event planning, napkin folding, but there's plenty of other opportunities professionally, educationally, that you can pursue if this is a domain of interest of yours. So we wanted to reinforce to those who had little understanding, as well as those within industry who may have a narrow understanding about the broad opportunities that this industry affords. So that was a very grandiose kind of objective, and I don't know if we've had any impact in that regard. I don't know what kind of metrics we would use to determine that, but that was our primary plan is to promote the industry. To that extent, we wanted to make sure we were broad enough and it provided at least an adequate amount of content. So that, one of the big decision points is having a catchy title marketing and so forth, but how far do you go with regards to the information and the depth and breadth? So realizing, you know, from the comment that the gentleman had made about never doing this again, I decided to get some help. So I enlisted the assistance of three other colleagues, and we each took a module. I did some HR stuff, my college cat, the Ann's, did some stuff on strategy, my colleague's Bill, my Carol did some stuff on marketing and e-commerce, and my colleague Andrew's did some work on investments and ownership. We thought that would stimulate, you know, enough breadth of conversation or exposure around the topics that each of us were interested in personally, but also covered a gamut of things in the industry that are quite relevant. So we knocked our heads together, worked with a really nice team, both within the content side and then on the design side. Took about ten months from start to finish to get it to production. We used a combination of both in-house and external folks to help us with all the video work and making it look pretty. And when we did the implementation, we wanted to make sure, to Eric's point, is it was two-way. So we wanted to make sure that when we delivered this, it wasn't just sort of us pontificating, but we were able to engage. So it was, our effort was trying to create a hybrid MOOC, an X MOOC and a C MOOC, so that there was a little bit of a give and take or an exchange. And we didn't quite go to the level that Eric was describing, which was highly engaging, where you got to be, you know, directly involved live. But one of the things we did as a spin on this is, we had an army of teaching assistants that monitored the discussion boards, and they were looking at themes, and they would feed back those themes to us, and then we could respond accordingly to try to provide that timeliness in response to those things that were coming up, or if there were misconceptions or there are really cool ideas, to promote those. So that was an effort to try to create that interactive dynamic and give people a sense that they were directly involved in the knowledge creation process. And to the point then, in terms of how far we wanted to go, we realized that what we wanted was whet appetites. We wanted to be able to go in and give people sort of a peek behind the curtain and then stimulate their motivation to go further. So we gave a lot of consideration to the additional resources that we built into this, hoping that people would go in and use them and extend their exposure beyond just the videos and so forth. And if I could do it all over again, I probably would extend that even further, take that sort of extracurricular collateral and build that in to provide a bit more content on the information that we did present, instead of making the learner go look for it, give it to them in a bit more direct way. So that's one of the learning points from a design standpoint. And I'll stop there. If you want to know more about how we went about that process, I'm happy to answer questions about that more directly. So I'd like to spend just a couple of moments on the two implications from this. My involvement in the development has changed the way I teach tremendously. Some of the research that I know everybody on this panel and maybe some of you are exposed to is that our attention spans are really limited. And I'm guessing that by virtue of the time that we've been in here for forty minutes or so, many of you all have checked out, thought about something at work or family, you've checked your email a couple of times, I get that. And that was a big guide to making sure that when we designed this, we could keep people's attention. So I thought about that a lot in terms of the seventy-five minutes twice a week for the different classes that I teach and how I can make sure that I stay relevant and not just the talking head, and so that the students are very polite and nodding, but they're actually really getting it and engaged, right? Right? So it forced me to think a lot differently than about the way I deliver that offline or instructor-like kind of content. So the concept of flipping the classroom became a much more prevalent means by which I engage with students. So having this MOOC and the other online resources that are available to students is we can send them to those types of resources, give them a little preparation, so that we can take the conversation and the learning in the classroom environment much further because everybody's got a little bit more substance behind them, a little bit more juice to speak. So that's been a very, very important means by which I have extended and changed the way I approach myself and conduct myself in that environment. Similarly, it's extended my efforts well beyond the classroom in ways that I had not anticipated. So the discussion boards that we built into the MOOC, in our learning management system that we use at Cornell, the Blackboard context, it provided me with new ways of using those discussion elements to promote ideas, to seek input, to find common interests, and play on those so that I can customize the learning experience much more for the students that are taking the courses, and also connect in the content of my classes with other classes that might be aligned. So when we talk about how you determine if human capital is adding any kind of substantive or tangible value, linking students to finance-related types of sites so that they can understand how to take HR, put it in the context of those who speak in those terms and work in those terms. So that was a very, I think, helpful reminder of placing my content within a broader context of the educational experience of our students. On the research side, there's so many really, really cool opportunities, as was mentioned, mining the information about how the learners actually use and consume this. Mention the verified learners, those that are paying a little bit of money to get that wonderful little certificate with the logo, that's kind of cool, nice tangible outcome. They're motivated, those types of learners are motivated differently than those who are simply there for intrinsic purposes. So from an evaluation standpoint, from an engagement standpoint, we have to think about why those learners go there for the first place and then design content accordingly. So here's one of the hypotheses that I'm working with, and I know there's been some effort in the research world to look at this. But my view is, we put all of our content out in front of the learner all at the same time instead of iteratively. It's a six-week course, you have six weeks to do this, and instead of putting out course, week one, week one, and then week two, week two, we just put all six weeks out there from day one, knowing full well that those that were verified learners would probably pursue this in a very linear fashion, they'd walk through it as we had designed it. However, knowing that the bulk of the people, and in fact, very few, I don't remember what the percentage, about five percent of the thirty thousand or so that have participated in our room, have actually gone and pursued that verifiable certificate. So my belief is that they don't operate in a linear fashion at all. In fact, it's more like Alice in Wonderland, they jump down the hole, they open a door and they say, cool, and they enter. Other times, they open that door and they say, no, that's not of interest to me, and try something else. So it's a way of looking then at the data and the pattern of clicks and the way they use this content and this medium to help us figure... to help us figure out how to customize the experience for individuals for whom they don't have maybe a tangible desire or outcome as a result of their experience here. So it's really, again, I understand this, again, as it plays back to my role as an educator. Most of my students don't go into HR. That's not their chosen career path. But I have to make sure I show how it's relevant to them in whatever career path they pursue. So that has been reinforced substantively by this sort of nonlinear approach that we're starting to learn from how people use this type of learning environment as a means to enhance whatever their desire to accomplish as a result of their engagement. So those are some, you know, top-line kinds of things. And I'm happy to go into more detail and answer questions and engage with you further as a result of our efforts. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Bruce. It's nice to learn that you, as a presenter, also gained experiences in the teaching changing experiences as a result of your engagement with MOOCs. Last but not least, my good friend, longtime friend Dimitris Palas, who is a strategic management marketing expert in specialization in technology tourism, is currently the head of Department of Tourism Hospitality and director of the E-Tourism Lab, a faculty management board at the university. Dimitris is leading E-Tourism Research, some research and other, and is introducing technology to all aspects of tourism and teaching. In 2009, he led Bournemouth University successfully through the UN WTO TED Awards educational process and is the BU Bournemouth University representative to the United Nations World Tourism Organization. In recognition of his contribution, he was elected in August 2009 as a member of the International Council of Tourism. And he served as president of the International Federation of Information Technologies and Tourism between 210 and 214. As I said, I've known Dimitris a very long time. He's not shy in giving his views. So I'm sure in his presentation, he will not only be giving his own views on our subject, but also comment on the views of the other panelists. Please. Thank you, Keith. It's a great pleasure to be back in Hong Kong. It's a great pleasure to work with colleagues. What Keith didn't say was that he was my PhD examiner. So it's his fault, really. Thank you for that. When he, when I've been asking to do this, I said, "I don't have enough expertise on e-learning, although we've done several things and several projects. And sadly, I don't have enough expertise on tourism education." David Derry has done a lot of extensive work. Kate Chong, a lot of colleagues. But I think what I have done over the years is looking to how the future are going to shape and how we are going to go to the new realities. And I think most of the tourism education discussions we've had so far, it's really about how do you put lipstick on a very old lady? And the panel earlier on that we were discussing, it was really about the evolution of tourism education. If we're here in the 1980s, and I'm talking about the panel last year, if we're here in the 1980s, we'd be talking about the same thing. Delivery, of course, is in a better way. And I think we are missing a trick. And the trick is that we are going to a very different world. Now, I took over as head of the public at Bournemouth University a year and a half ago. And I started looking very strategically what we're going to do. So I came in, and for two months, we worked nonstop about the Vision 2020. And Vision 2020 was a three-year vision. And it was fast things to do to bring our education and our experience to the place where we wanted to be. And now we're kind of having put that train on the rails. We're looking to the Vision 2030. And the universities invited me next Thursday to go to Vision 2050. And they asked me, "What do you think is going to happen by 2050?" And I said, "Most of the people on this list will be dead to begin with." And this, some reality starts hitting home. So I'm not going to talk about e-learning or MOOCs yet, but I'm going to talk about the new reality that's facing. Most of these guys, they called them in China, downheads. What do you call it down? People were looking at them with a mobile phone. So I spent 10 days in China because of the academy with colleagues here. And every single person, everywhere, was interacting, engaging, watching things on smartphones, doing all kinds of things. But there are some other very interesting things that happen in China. And the most interesting thing I found was the bicycles. There were bicycles everywhere. And then when I started looking to that, four companies are providing bicycles to everybody. You've got a smart application, and you're going, you're collecting the bicycle. And then the bicycle, you take the bicycle, and you leave the bicycle wherever you like. It's revolutionary. And the reason why, this thing has happened before in Europe and in different other places, but the main difference is that you take the bike from wherever the bike is, and you return the bike wherever you like, wherever it's convenient for you. This meant that you are not preoccupied by the location of the bike station, which meant that you're utterly flexible. This simple little fact is changing the ownership of bicycles in China. If I was saying to any Chinese person five years ago that you are not going to have a bike in five years' time, they would have never believed me. In fact, we are going to a situation where ownership is not important. In fact, it's much more expensive to buy, to buy a bike, maintain a bike, make sure that all the chains and everything work, rather than not own the bike. Someone who knows what they're doing and has got the expertise and the infrastructure to service that are going to play with the bike. The other thing is money. Everybody's paying with Ali, money, Alibaba money, or WeChat money. And again, if I was saying to a Chinese person or anybody in the world, that you're not going to have any money, but you pay on Alibaba money five years ago, you would have said, "No way." Now, if you see the big societal changes, you see that we're going to a very different world. And the world where students are going to come to a class, and Kathy was talking about earlier on, that they'll be looking forward to the teacher to tell them what the teacher wants to know, wants them to know, for them to come back in two months and give an exam and say, "Have you learned what I told you?" This is something of the past. So if you look into 2030, you'll find a very different kind of experience. People will be utterly connected, they'll be connected everywhere. They'll have a very short concentration span, and that's what Bruce was talking about. Would they do 70-minute classes? In my classes in Bournemouth University, I don't do 70 minutes right now. I'm doing times of 10 to 12 minutes. Then I give them something to do, then I come back, and all the rest of it. They'll be very global and very mobile. And the ownership of knowledge and expertise will change dramatically. So people will not come to Bournemouth University, Hong Kong PolyU, to wherever else, to learn everything in the institution, but they'll go to where they'll find the best experience, the best expertise, the best teachers on this particular subject. And who may choose that, you know, revenue management, we've got Cornell or somewhere else, or HR, we're going to one place. Somewhere else, we're going to Hong Kong PolyU. Some other place, we're going to Bournemouth University. So this is changing the way that the education is going to work in the future. The second big thing is how, what Eric was describing about the co-creation. And how do we, first, how do we excite the students? By giving a range of different clips and engagement, different kind of things. And how, how you co-create? Can you co-create with me? Can you tell me the case that is from your areas? From Sydney, from Italy, from Greece, from different places? Doesn't work like that in your place. So I think the major trend would be the co-creation. And the major trend would be the excitement and the engagement at that level. I think by 2030, we'll have a very different environment where everything will be interconnected. And I think we'll have robotics, and autonomous driving, and all those things. And we'll have information everywhere. Now, I'm coming from an information and education system when I was growing up in Greece, where we had to learn the information. I had to learn all the rivers in Europe. That was the education. I had to memorize this. Now, we have Google for that. So we're moving to a very different way of how can we take advantage of all this information and how can we synthesize and dynamically process and come back with intelligent solutions back to the industry? This is a very different environment. And I dare to say, and look at the Chinese education system, it's really still about memorization of things. And I think we're going to go to very, very different things, where we're going to look into, how can we process things very quickly? And how can we create dynamic solutions part of the co-creation of products and services and solutions around the world? This is a very different mental thing. Why I'm saying all that? Because I'm saying that MOOCs are coming out of e-learning. E-learning was effectively dumping slides. Because when I started teaching, I had to stand by the photocopy for hours, photocopy the notes to give to the students. And then we learn e-learning. "Hey, I've got a PowerPoint presentation, I'll put it there, and you're going to paint it on your head or your head." So e-learning was the extension of that with a little bit of discussion. Let's be honest with ourselves, a lot of the discussion didn't really happen there. And some of extra resources. So the MOOC comes along, and Eric was saying, the massive scale of it, you're going to be able to project that throughout the world. And especially when you come to WuJiaXia, the numbers are huge. But I think we're going to a next stage where we are going to have a plug-and-play situation, where you're going to have micro-knowledge units, whatever you call them, that someone will collect and read and study whenever they want in their career. So I may be a hotel manager, and six years down the line, I may like to do HR because I have a difficult HR situation. And I'm going to go and collect this. And for six days, I'll sit at home and I'm just going to read the HR stuff, and I'm going to see all the resources. And then I'll forget about it for two years. And I'm going to come back and say, "The next thing is legal stuff." So we are going into anarchy. Anarchy in terms of education and learning experiences. We are going to have much less traction. We're going to have what you were saying earlier on about uncollecting credits. And if I've learned enough stuff, I may come up with a degree, or I may have expertise. And what's a degree? I mean, you know, by 2030, I think we'll be questioning other things. What is a degree? Why is that a bachelor's? Why is that a master's? Why is that, whatever? So it will be much more driven by knowledge, much more driven by expertise, much less regulation. And the universities actually are not prepared for that. We are very slow, we are very regulation and legal services-focused, and we are not capable of actually doing clever things in the sense that we're not agile enough. So to conclude, I think we're going to a very different world of education and level. I think technology will be the platform and will be the enabler of this world. I think MOOCs will be a platform of managing, creating this knowledge, disseminating the knowledge, engaging people to co-create the knowledge and take things forward. And I think we're going to go into a situation and unchavil territory. But there's, there are two things I'm certain about. One is that we need to start from there. What do we like to do in 2030? And come backwards, rather than go from the back forward. So rather than having, because it's a re-engineering. So rather than putting a lot of lipstick on an old lady, it's really about looking to what we like, the new model. It's like an old car. Rather than pushing the new, the old car towards the new realities, it's really about going to the next stage and looking to what the new car will look like. I was just talking to Richard last night, and he was talking about the Teslas. The Teslas are not about the car. The Teslas are about the battery. Because of the better battery, they have got much more autonomy, which become the next stage. So it's not about the evolution of car, it's about the evolution of battery. So strategically, it's that kind of position. And I think we need to start looking to that when you're looking to, when you're looking to the strategy of the future. And I think the other thing I'd like you to take away is that we've seen nothing yet. And those people who have got leadership, like Hong Kong Polytechnic University, will kind of be in a better position to take things forward because you would have experienced what works and what doesn't work. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Dimitris. And forthright as ever. I think that's stimulating in the afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have time for questions. And could we follow the usual format, please? Tell us who you're, tell us where you are. And then, David, you first.
Yes, my name is mentioned, so I felt I ought to stand up and say something. And it follows, in part from what Dimitris said, but it also was prompted by all the other speakers. I think the really big challenge for institutions like this, my own university, the University of Surrey, is what value-added do we provide to students who study on campus? Because students pay a lot of money to study at the University of Surrey. It's hugely expensive. But the only real source of money that universities have got is from their students. Now, if the student, if on campus you do not provide some real value-added which is different from what MOOCs can provide when they're fully developed and they're operational, it's a very foolish student who says, "I'm going to pay, whatever it is at the University of Surrey, £20,000 a year, just in fees, to get an MBA, when I can do this for £3,000." That thinking about what happens on campus which is different. And if you're doing something different on campus, how does that equate with what is actually provided by the MOOCs? And that, it's a, and I'm not aware of much thinking about what the campus experience offers, because I actually don't think it offers much other than that. But this is actually quite important. By being on campus and getting to know other people, for the rest of your life, they're your contacts. And if those other people become influential, you've got influential, you've got influential contacts. And that was what universities like Oxford and Cambridge originally offered. Went to Oxford and Cambridge because there you met the people you were with in government for the rest of your life.
So it was a thought, a question. I feel angry at the response.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, David. It's a really good point. I can say, it's always in my mind, what, you know, can we do as a campus program? I personally believe that when I was sitting on the Micro Master Working Committee, so we are working on this definition. So it is a typical blended mode. That's why we're talking about 25% to 50% that range. I can see this pattern is coming. It's sort of the way we call it blended. 30% probably around on campus, online, and another major 70% offline. So this is the model I guess the world is trying. So we are just on another pioneer journey, which we are humbly learning every day. I guess it is happening, so we cannot stop that from happening. Up to this moment, there are 36 Micro Masters around the world across in different disciplines. So there's no doubt about that. But I still believe the students and the teachers' interaction is very important. So we do have to learn a lot from our professors, our peers, and then on the classroom setting environment. So this is my personal view. Thank you, David.
The golden age of professorism is over. So to answer your point directly, we can create community online, very similar to the way we can create community on campus. I think, in my view, one of these has to do with these types of skill sets that we can nurture in that direct engagement kind of context versus a virtual context. And I think some of the things that we promote, especially when we think about hospitality and the intimacy and the co-creation of that experience, that's going to be a difficult in the online space to facilitate effectively. So I think we, as academics, need to think a lot differently than about the types of skills and the content areas that we can actively promote in those on-campus experiences. skills and the content areas that we can actively promote in those on-campus experiences compared to then the other types of learning that occurs both within the classroom while they're on campus, outside the classroom when they're on campus, what they learned before and after and so forth. So I think we're going to see a wholesale change. I'm not sure what it's going to look like, but I do think it's going to be driven by some of those dynamics.
Right. And echoing the previous speakers, firstly, you know, for on-campus students, they still enjoy, I suppose, more direct access to the teachers, instructors, not to say that they attend lectures, but teachers should be facilitating the road of quality checkers that facilitate, so they have the first advantage. And secondly, again, something that I learned from the Duke of the University of Netherlands, they produce this Spox, small private online courses, and they deliberately, you know, put together their local students plus company representatives to take those courses together. In fact, they, they want company representatives to take the course a few weeks earlier before the students do, because by the time the students, you know, to progress, progress to a certain week in that particular internal course, the company representative can put together a real project for the students to take. So again, this is something that is easier to engineer and orchestrate when you have, you know, to close ties with industry in the local city, and that would obviously directly benefit the local students. That's all I can offer.
No, no, but the adaptive nature, maybe. I have got, I can see the thank you threatening thing from background. I think, I think David is absolutely right, and I think a lot of, a lot of the ideas that we brought forward is absolutely, are absolutely excellent. I think what's going to happen is we are going to a situation where the added value of the campus experience or the co-location may not be a campus. We may not need the campus. We may need to meet every three weeks in a hotel for three days. So it's, it's the physical co-creation that's going to take place. I think it's invaluable. And I was recently in Google, in Ireland, in the headquarters of Google, and I was there a day or two prior night, and everybody was there. And I said to the guys, "What the hell are you doing here? You know, until what time do you work?" And they said, "We practically live here. Why do you live here?" Because they said, "We've got our friends and the clever people are here. Food and drink is in here." They had a pub in Google, in the Google headquarters, so they've got, they had a swimming pool. So they were going away at lunchtime, whatever, there was not, there's food all day long. There's recreational leisure facilities all day, all day long. So there's the nine to five, I'll walk, I'll sweat, I'll go home, or I'll go to, I'll go sleep, I'll go leisure, I'll go out, it's also challenging. So what was happening is that they were using that location and the co-creation, the physical co-creation space, to engage, to live, to work, to play, to learn, all of those things blended. And I think that is the campus experience. The campus experience is to get brains together and to co-create with a faculty and to co-create with, with other people. In Bournemouth, we've got a very international kind of campus. We've got a lot of people who are coming along from all over the place to work together. If a Chinese person was staying in China, as an Italian person stays in Italy, in Italy, they'll have a very different experience. So I think it's really, we need to redesign the campuses, and many campuses are, yes, thank you, the time is up, yes, no, but the most important thing is that the campuses are changing. So the libraries are changing now to meeting spaces. In the past, you were not supposed to eat, drink, or whatever, do whatever else in the library. Now, we're giving the space to people to co-create knowledge and to access knowledge from wherever. So I think, I think the campus experience will be absolutely critical, but the campus experience will tend to facilitate that interaction and engagement, and it will be, it will be very, very significant in the future.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for an excellent panel, very informative description and, 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 and. Well, exactly, very competent. But thank you all for taking your time.
Thank you very much. As a token of appreciation of our honorable speakers for valuable contributions, may in fact Professor Hyun Song, Associate Dean of SHTM, the Polytene University, to present certificates for our honorable guests. Professor Hyun Song, please. Followed by Professor Bruce Tracy. Next would be Professor Eric Choi. Last but not least, of course, our Professor Khan Chin-Chiu. As a token of our appreciation for our session chairs' valuable contribution, may in fact Professor Song to kindly present certificates to Kate Jenkins, Professor.
Thank you. Thank you, Professors. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for active participation in the session section. Professors may exit. Next comes the refreshment break and poster section at even foyer and function room 1 to 3. After the refreshment break break, poster section, plenary session 5, which is sponsored by Business Travel Asia Pacific, will be held in this room, function room 5 and 6. Please come back to here for plenary session 5 at 4:00 PM. After plenary session 5, the closing ceremony and gala dinner will be held at 7:00 in Silver Fox Ballroom, and a cocktail reception will start half an hour prior to the gala dinner at 6:30. Sunnys will be placed at each course, and you can take the elevator to the skybridge. Please be reminded that there is a 3D instant photo booth at the skybridge. We would like to see you tonight. Thank you.